Good evening. At seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting in order. Thank you all for attending this evening. Bailey, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Black, Commissioner Batty, Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Keen.
Here.
Commissioner Gerard.
Here.
And Commissioner Langness.
Present.
We ask if you're able to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Vice President. With the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, we would like to move North Lakes Academy ahead of the variance for seventy-seven thirty-nine, north shore. So number seven will become number six, and number six will become seven. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
Second.
All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes from the August eighth, twenty eighteen, meeting?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of signature by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I'll abstain. We're good. Motion carries. All right. Our first order of business then will be North Lakes Academy conditional use permit. This will be a public hearing to consider the CUP application. The way this will work this evening is the city will present the application as they understand it. The commissioners will then ask any clarification questions that they may have. We will then ask the applicant if they would like to say a few words, and then we will hold the public hearing part. I'll give some more direction at that point. After the public hearing, it'll come back to the commission for a recommendation. So with that, Donovan, I believe you're presenting?
Yes, sir. Chair members of the Planning Commission like to present the conditional use permit application for North Lakes Academy. The location is on two hundred and thirty-second Street, northwest portion of the city, shown here, between Broadway and Everton, shown here in blue on your screen. The school is planned to be, to house K through eight students. A total of, planned enrollment would be six hundred with twenty-seven classrooms. And my staff report suddenly went awry. So I will have to call an audible here. The main, the vehicle access is from two hundred and thirty-second Street. Also, there'll be sidewalk and pedestrian access from there. The building, because of wetlands, is located more toward the rear of the site. The approximate location of the building is about five hundred and fifty feet from the front lot line, from two hundred and thirty-second Street. The applicant has presented also on your screen the proposed queuing of vehicles during, during pickup, you know, in the evening or morning drop-off, and a hundred and five parking spaces. And the, you know, fire chief has reviewed this, and to also, to add to the fire hydrant on the rear, a fire hydrant is proposed by this front area, which is a flagpole. The, it's a, I'll get to, it's a two-story building, and it meets the height requirements for the zoning district. And the, also, there's standards of use for schools, which include, the site be a minimum of one acre, and there be adequate landscaping on the, you know, to buffer from adjoining property uses. To the east is the St. Peter's Cemetery, and to the west is a single-family home and also a Buddhist worship space. The, the, in conversations with the project team, it's understood that most of the traffic will be coming from, from the east, and also, you know, from Everton, where there is a controlled intersection with Broadway. The, there is currently wetland delineation in effect, and I am looking for the landscaping plan to show you, the tree buffering, shown here. And so we have trees along the driveway, foundation plantings, some trees in the parking area, and what the, there is a tree preservation plan that was submitted, which shows much of the trees in the rear to be preserved, which is consistent with some of the curriculum for the school. It's a sixty-seven thousand-square-foot structure. The parking requirements meet minimum zoning code requirements. And the, because of the site, and because they put it toward the rear, there, there's a sanitary, private pump station that the applicant will build and maintain. There's also a monument sign shown on your screen that's proposed to be lighted, and one of the conditions staff has is that, you know, following events, that that light be turned off at night, and also a photometric plan be submitted to show that there's not excessive light spillover from that. And at this point, I'm happy to take any questions from the Planning Commission.
Commissioners, any questions?
Donovan, can you show, can you show a, the draw, the overhead of the area?
Sure.
You said it was east of the cemetery? Is that what you said?
It's west of the cemetery.
West of the cemetery?
Right, here's the cemetery.
There's the cemetery. So it's, it's west of there, and it's going back into the woods, so to speak?
Correct. I guess that much of this area back here was excavated as part of the interstate construction, so it falls back. We've had many different, a few different development proposals for this property, but that lowering and the inability to have gravity sewer reach two hundred and thirty-second Street is really limited interest in this parcel. And in this case, the school is, is able to cite its, you know, building further back and do its own gravity pump and, and gravity sewer pump, and actually, you know, works out well. It's a fourteen-acre site.
So, so the entrance of it is from the south. Two hundred and thirty-second runs east and west. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the entrance is from the south onto it. So where, where is the residential?
It's a structure, there's, there's a, there's a house here, and this is part of the Buddhist worship center here.
Okay. All right. So the traffic flow, buses, et cetera, is expected to come from Broadway or from Everton?
More likely, you know, from, from Broadway. Then, you know, well, I'm sorry, Broadway to Everton, you know, where there's, there's a light, which is, makes it simpler to enter onto Broadway. I believe also the assumption is that most of the parents will be coming from the east, and will be coming up this, this direction.
Around the backside of Cub Foods or whatever, that, that particular area?
Correct.
So that's the expected traffic flow from that side, not from Broadway from the, from the west, correct?
Correct. I mean, obviously, that is an option to come this way. I mean, it is shorter, but just, it's my understanding that it can be, it can be difficult to exit back onto Broadway. So I think in total, that most of the traffic will come from this direction, from the east.
Was there any concern evaluated as far as the increase in traffic and what that would do for anything around that vicinity?
Well, a formal traffic study wasn't done, and, you know, there, there is a concern that, I mean, obviously, it will be a great amount of traffic for this road. It is a city road, and, you know, there, there could be increased maintenance because of this, but that's, that's, you know, with any development, that's, that's what happens.
Do they own the lot all the way up to, I think it's two seventy-fifth? I didn't see a, 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 a lot size.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, two thirty-fifth, yes.
Two thirty-fifth.
All the way back to here. But it's about a fourteen-acre site.
Okay.
Donovan, when you look at the illustration of the school where the sign is and whatnot, it shows direct line of sight all the way back to the school, but we're going through a fair amount of wetland and woods there. What is the actual going to look like? So here it shows basically clear cutting all the way back to the school, but we have wetland in there and trees.
So there is, I mean, this is the woodland preservation plan on your screen now, and it does show, you know, the retention. This is, so what's in the kind of honeycombed area is, is tree and is, is proposed to be removed? So there, there will be trees removed, you know, in that front area, but this is also listed as wooded. And I have not been deep into the site. Of course, I've driven by, but it's kind of a thicket at the front, so perhaps the...
That's an understatement.
Perhaps the applicant, the application is, applicant is Mr. Cam Stotler, staff with North Lakes Academy, and project is represented by Mr. Ku Wang.
And then we go down into this site compared to the neighbors. It looks like the elevation actually drops topographically, so it's going to sit a little lower?
Correct.
Visually, it'll sit a little lower?
Well, I mean, it's still a thirty, I believe it's a thirty-one-foot-tall building, so it, you know, it...
It's a relative thing.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So clarifying, clarifying what Paul was bringing up in regard to the, the division from two hundred and thirty-second, is that just a computer sketch that's shown there that that's, that's actually, it looks like a ball field or that kind of a setup for, is that what it is, or is it trees?
Looking at the woodland preservation plan, it does show the retention of trees in this foreground, but, you know, I believe the project team could probably answer that better. I mean, you know, the architects designed those, which, of course, it features the building. I think it's meant to be more schematic than actual, than realistic.
I think, you know, the driveway coming in, are there, are they going to, are they going to save that wooded area to the west? I know they're going to clear out so much for the driveway, but according to the architectural drawings, it looks like it's a big field. But according to the, the drawings, not the, not the diagrams, but the drawings, it looks like they're saving, you know, or it looks like the wooded area just to the west, that whole, all the way up the driveway?
No, I'd assume that they're removing those, because there's a sidewalk, you know, adjacent.
No, no. See, we're, just, just keep going west. I mean, east. I'm sorry. I mean, east. Yeah, that, that area right there, is that staying? A little further, yeah, right there.
I believe some number of trees will, will remain.
Because it says wooded area, that's a real long area, even after the drawing, but according to the picture, it looked like it was a football field or a baseball field. You know, it was all clear and green.
Well, it doesn't show it on the, you know, on the, on the tree preservation plan. The, in conversations with the applicant, I mean, that, you know, this being a K through eight, you know, populate, student population, you know, we did, you know, we did talk about there being playing fields in the front there. So actually, I think that, you know, I think your, your questions are valid, and I'm not, I'm not sure of the, of the answer.
Any other questions?
Last question I have is in regard to the parking. It, it looks like, you know, you're dealing with a school that's K through eight, so there's no student drivers. It, it looks like there's an excessive amount of pavement over what's needed. Is that necessary, or is that, are we trying to, we're trying to have less and less impervious areas if we can, if we can work it? So I thought I saw three parking spots per classroom. I'm not sure the reason for three per classroom, but...
Yeah, that's, that's required for, per classroom, three per classroom for, you know, for this, like a K through eight population. That's eighty-one spaces. They're providing a hundred and five, so there is some over the maximum. The fire chief does require at least a, you know, twenty-two, twenty-four-foot-wide, you know, access for, for the driveway, and also for this area here adjacent to the, to the building, you know, for emergency vehicle, be able, you know, like a ladder truck to be able to pull up and extends outriggers and, you know, do a kind of rescue operation.
Okay, but why, why would, why would someone want to have thirty or twenty, twenty-four more spaces paved than necessary?
Well, I mean, there's, there are other events, there's nighttime events. I think, you know, I think it's, it would be a good thing for it to be able to accommodate all the parking needs on the site.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Hearing none. Would the applicant like to speak to the... Please, we ask that you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah. Cam Stotler, one-two-three-four, one hundred and twenty-third Avenue Northeast in Blaine, Thank you for this opportunity. I'm the executive director for North Lakes Academy, and I grew up and attended Forest Lake schools. Graduated in nineteen ninety-six. Both my parents taught at the junior highs here for more than thirty years, and I'm currently one of five former Forest Lake graduates that are on staff at North Lakes, which for us makes up about ten percent of our population, staffing population. I'm not sure what you know about North Lakes Academy, so I wanted to enlighten you a little bit about who we are. We're a unique school in many ways. Some of the more remarkable aspects is that in the nineteen years of operation, North Lakes has only had two executive directors, and that's extremely rare in the charter world, where the average length of stay is just over three years for a executive director. The school itself will be celebrating its twenty-year anniversary next year, signifying that it's amongst the thirty oldest charter schools in the state of Minnesota, and because Minnesota was the first state to allow charters, is by definition amongst the oldest in the nation. North Lakes currently serves over four hundred students, represented by about three hundred families, the majority of which reside within Forest Lake, and recent records show that at least fifteen families have moved into the Forest Lake area just to attend North Lakes. The reason families will commit to this type of move into our school is because we focus on educating the whole learner. We put the buzzwords into practice with our becoming curriculum, our personalized instruction, and our high rate of retention of staff, that is, again, is really rare in the charter world. We're looking to expand because we believe strongly in our method of educating and feel that it's appropriate to offer to our communities starting in kindergarten. Giving families the option of school choice makes for a stronger overall educational environment, and more importantly, gives the students a greater chance at finding their own best fit. There is no doubt that there are differences in offerings between the school choices located in this area, and truly how awesome is that, to have that chance to consider? NLA is committed to a small, safe, successful approach to education. We have no desire to grow beyond our anticipated capacity of sixty-six students per grade level or a total of about eight hundred total students between the two campuses. We know that we start to lose what's best about our school if we outgrow it. We have planned carefully and intentionally to make sure we are providing excellent education first. The results have been a program that has been recognized by the Minnesota Department of Education as a high-quality charter school. We're one of only forty in the state of Minnesota, as well as a ranking on schooldigger.com as the forty-eighth highest-performing district of over four hundred and fifty total districts in the state of Minnesota, including the highest ranked in our geographical area. Our current middle school capacity is bursting at the seams. The space needed to adequately provide quality physical education, special education, and lower-grade-level classrooms is desperately needed. A new K-8 building will provide upgrades and enough space to serve students well. Also, the addition of two playgrounds, usable green space, and a regulation-sized gymnasium will provide opportunities for the community that have been needed for years. As a proposed building site continues to grow in development, NLA can be a landmark recognized in that area by the city and those within it. I am hopeful and deeply invested in this potential growth, and am willing to answer any questions you may have regarding the school or the proposed expansion. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioners, questions? Mike?
Yeah, you mentioned to, operating, operating two campuses.
Correct.
Just kind of give us a little history here, or not history, but in the future, what do you plan on two campuses, buses going back and forth, or whatever, just an update?
So our busing is controlled by District Eight Thirty-One. They are busing, so it wouldn't, the setup and process wouldn't change for us, just obviously the new location. Our current middle school is located just north on, right off Highway sixty-one and Highway eight, right by Flyways Gymnastics and the bus garage. The way it works is in the morning, all students in the Forest Lake area are bused to the Forest Lake High School and Forest Lake Middle School, where they then take shuttle buses to our two campuses. And then in the afternoon, that process is reversed, so they get on at our campus and shuttle to the high school to get on their home bus. So that process wouldn't change.
So, so you're going to have the two campuses, but like, you know, what, what's going to happen at one campus and what's happening at the other campus? You know, like kindergarten and first grade at one, and two through eight, whatever, at the other one?
No, I'm sorry. So we're seeking a K-8 building to house kindergarten through eighth grade.
Okay.
And we already have established a nine-through-twelve campus that's behind Target Walmart. That will remain as-is. We're just looking to expand from fifth grade down to kindergarten and have that be housed in a single site.
And your campus center, it's up by Flyways, that's going to no longer exist?
That'll be, correct.
Okay.
Not for our purpose.
That's...
Yep.
Along those lines, what percentage, since you have a large on the, on the bus, what percentage of parents will be picking up and dropping off versus taking the bus?
Right. So our current numbers indicate, and I'll look for confirmation, but I want to say it's forty percent pickup, sixty percent on the bus. We, obviously, we don't know what new enrollees and new families will be coming in, but assuming that trend remains the same, that's why we think it's a benefit to have such a high queuing space, that it should not extend onto two hundred and thirty-second for a drop-off and pickup.
Very good. Questions?
What's your, what's your current enrollment versus your projected enrollment?
Right. So our current enrollment's just over four hundred students. At the end of, when we reach full capacity in all, we're looking to essentially double the size to about eight hundred.
K through eight?
K, overall.
Overall.
K through twelve. Yep. So the K through eight campus would house six hundred of those students, and then...
So K through eight right now is how many?
Well, currently, we have a five-through-eight. We're not down to kindergarten. So part of the proposed building is expanding down to kindergarten. So our current population in grades fifth through eight in the middle school campus is just over two hundred, and the upper school also has just over two hundred. So it's an even split right now.
Let's go back to the parking, because it's always parking.
Right.
Parking and traffic.
Right.
You have parking for about a hundred, but driving by this site, it's, it's a, it's a location that's not heavily traveled, and there's not a lot of additional parking in the area.
Right.
What do you do for these evening events? I assume you have basketball, and you've got...
Sure.
Orchestra, band or something?
Our bigger nights are conferences, and music concerts tend to be our most heavily attended. Our way of addressing that is to have the hundred and twenty spaces, which we've never had before. The middle school right now operates on a much smaller parking lot, and they certainly spill out, as they can attest. So we're seeing this as a luxury, the opportunity here. We plan on filling those hundred spots and then being able to put any overlay in that along the, they can use the space up the driveway on one side to park, and then also, if we need to move them on to our green space, we're capable and ready to do that, too, for those events.
So you, your intent is to keep everyone parked on premise?
Absolutely. Yeah. Believe me, that serves us very well as, as well, the families coming in and the grandparents attending, and they really appreciate that.
And you don't get to ask all the questions here. And we were, we were talking earlier about that wooded front there versus the top, the view that we see where you can see clear from two thirty-two to the school?
Yeah, I do think that drawing, the, the reason for that drawing was to show us the monument sign, and what that would be. That was the highlight of that drawing, but it did give you that view back into the building. Our, our ideal is to have some green space that is usable for our fire classes and for practices and things like that. We currently don't have any available to us at the middle school site. It is landlocked, and, and that's not something we've been afforded. But we do also, you have no reason to know this, our authorizer as a charter school is Audubon Southern of the North Woods, and their reason for authorizing schools is a heavy component into environmental education. So it's also important to us to maintain as much of that site as we can and use it for education, use it for outdoor classrooms, use it for its scenic beauty and everything that goes with that. So a part of us is trying to maintain that site, and that's one of the reasons the site was attractive, was for those offerings. Did that end? Yeah, sure. This is, sorry, this is Beth Ann Peck. She's our elementary coordinator.
Do you need my address?
Sure.
Two fifteen twenty-third Avenue, New Brighton. So I'm the elementary coordinator, and had a heavy hand in this. Those drawings were actually done about a month ago before the wetland was identified. And originally, there was going to be a soccer field in the front, but the wetland is there, and then the building had to shift a little bit, and now kind of like open green spaces in the back. So I don't think the colored picture fully represents what's going to be at the front of that building. It's going to be wetland and wooded.
So it'll be kind of a broken view through the trees?
Yeah. Yeah, those pictures were rendered before that change was made.
Thank you. Other questions of the applicant? Eric?
I attended the neighborhood meeting a week or two ago, and I wanted to hear if there's been any changes that addressed any of the questions or concerns that were brought up at that.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Ku Wang, one-three-three-five, Pierce Butler Route, St. Paul, Minnesota. We're the development manager on behalf of the school. We have noted the changes in which you've made, along with the changes in which some of the neighbors have made at that meeting. There, in that packet, you also see that there's a number of suggestions from the engineers also, and so we're waiting to accumulate all of these modifications and do it as a resubmission back to Donovan that would reflect all of those changes.
Couple other things. Just for transparency now, the, the, NLA does not own the building. They leased the building from a private owner. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, a little bit of history on charter schools, as you may or may not know, charter schools themselves cannot own any buildings whatsoever. The way in which these buildings are owned is that the charter school goes off and creates what's called an affiliated building company. That's another five-one-C-three nonprofit that operates for the benefit of the charter school, but it's a freestanding entity. That entity is the entity that actually goes and bonds, purchases the property, constructs it, and then leases it back to North Lakes Academy.
And because of that, it's a non-taxable, real estate tax situation, correct?
The affiliated building company is a not-for-profit Minnesota corporation, so you are correct on that.
Okay. One last question is, and we have somebody from Blaine and somebody from New Brighton. My question is, when are you going to move to Forest Lake?
I'll let the executive director answer that one.
You, you can ask my wife, who teaches and lives in Blaine, and...
Any other questions? Mike?
I have one. The, the, back to parking. Say, let's just say this is ample parking for now. It, it looks great and everything.
Right.
Is there room there? I see there's a wetland, too, and you're planning... I see there's a wetland, too, and you're kind of close to the borderline on the east side. Is there room for adding additional parking, say, in two, three years from now? If you need it, is there room for adding more parking there?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as you can see from that screen on there, the wetland is, it's south of the school, from the school there, there's a seventy-five-foot buffer. Anything beyond that buffer down to the street is usable property. And so, if there is a need for additional green space, additional parking, it can go in that portion of it, assuming that all setbacks and screening is put in place per the city's design criteria. The other option is to go to the north a little bit to pick up some parking to that northeast corner also.
Okay. That's what I was asking, if you were gonna, if you had planned on maybe heading north a little bit.
Yeah.
But there is that wetland number two there, but it looks like there's plenty of room to squeeze in between.
You are correct on that.
Okay.
Any else, Commissioners? All right. This is a public hearing. The way this works, we will officially open the public hearing. We ask anyone who wishes to speak to this application, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple minutes giving your thoughts, and then we will just move on to the next person. After everyone has been heard, we will close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back for decisions by the planning commission. So, with that, we'll officially open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to the application?
Hi, my name is Jennifer Dale. I am in the process of purchasing my home here in town. We close on the twenty-seventh. My current address is One Zero Eight Four Five Matthew Drive in Chisago City. October one, it'll be on Grafton. I am a parent of three NLA students, one graduate, a junior, and an eighth grader. I also have the privilege of coming on as a staff member as of last year. My children have been involved with North Lakes Academy since they could start in fifth grade, and I can say that we, my husband and I, intentionally chose North Lakes for its small school size, its exceptional staff, and for their becoming curriculum. I can say without a doubt that my children are stronger students and better people for being at North Lakes Academy. I couldn't even imagine them anywhere else. I have taught in a number of different districts myself, and this is hands-down the best place I've ever worked. It's just the most logical thing for North Lakes Academy to expand to fifth grade, through, I mean, from fifth grade to kindergarten. It just fits our culture, our school environment. It has been needed for a long time. I wish it had happened earlier. And I'm so excited to be a part of this as a parent, and I hope you would strongly give this consideration. It is good for our, it is good for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Steve Matthews. Sorry. Hey, what's coming up here? You're already up. Come on over.
No, I didn't only get halfway there.
My name is Steve Matthews. I am from Forest Lake on One Eighty-Ninth Street. My wife, my family and I moved here four and a half years ago, and we had obviously a choice of areas to move to, 'cause I was working actually down in Roseville. And my, I have a junior and senior currently, and they started the seventh and eighth grade here with North Lakes. And my senior, till he got here, just 'cause my job had to go to a different school, started his fall at a different school for six straight years. So, we got a good idea what schools worked well for him, what didn't, as well as both boys. And, you know, North Lakes Academy, when he came and interviewed, and, not interviewed, but toured the site, it was, it just was a great fit. You know, my boys have not been able to grow, I don't think would have been able to grow and be experienced and try new things that they have if they weren't part of the North Lakes Academy. And they've done things, they, I actually hosted a foreign language student as well, exchange student, he came, and his, being able to join the basketball team, the soccer team, the track team, you know, those are opportunities that he most likely would not have been able to do if we would have been part of the Forest Lake or any of the larger public schools. So, it'd be just to have the option for the students to, you know, have personal attention with the teachers, be able to have a lot of, you know, abilities to actually get to know and get to know the friends and, you know, the teachers, really, that's where they want to go. That's what they want to do. It's just a great school and great environment for our kids, and we just wish to have more schools like this.
Thank you. Hey, what else wish to speak?
I sat in your position. My name is Russell Mansmith. I live at Two Three Five Nine Five, Elmcrest Avenue North, Forest Lake, Minnesota. We've lived there for fifty-two years. My property borders within two-hundred feet of the back of this property. I think I know at least thirty percent of the families that, and I don't think I've ever heard negative talks about North Lakes Academy. It's been positive, and I'm a businessman in the community. Cam Stotler's parents were good friends of mine. Might have given him his first haircut. Now, I've got to get down to the nitty-gritty. These kids deserve a better setup than they've got now. And as far as I'm concerned, they deserve a better location. Where I live, it's the area that would drain down. There's a government ditch that was dug in nineteen-twenty-something, never been cleaned out. My property, I have a Christmas tree farm. My property is a drain field for everybody in that area, 'cause it's wetland. What's gonna happen, this is just gonna add to it. That ditch, when they put the freeway in, it was like putting a dam in, where they put the culverts, didn't accept the water from the ditch. Well, the ditch is still plugged now. What are they gonna do with holding ponds? They gotta, where the tar is on the parking lot, that's gotta, water's gotta run into a holding pond. Have they done any borings for, know where the water is? I dare say that you go down anywhere from three to five feet, you're hitting water. And that's after fifty-two years of living in the area. And again, these kids deserve a, I can think of a spot within six-hundred yards of where that spot is that would make a wonderful location for the school. You wouldn't have to change the infrastructure. Right now, you go by Starbucks in the morning, half the time, you can't get out from Cub at eight-thirty in the morning, 'cause the people from Starbucks are parking on Two Hundred and Thirty-Second, waiting to get in for their coffee. That road is, if anybody's driven out there, it's a very narrow road. No curbs, no gutters, no nothing. I also have, I don't know if I mentioned, I spent twelve years on your committee, so I've, I've never had to talk in front of it, but I'll tell you one thing that was funny one time. They were developing some land out by Echo Bocken, and there'd been a divorce in the family, and the two, half the land went to the lady, half to the man. They came into our meeting and had a very big discussion. We had to tell them to leave and go settle their divorce out in the hall. But the infrastructure is gonna be monumental if you're gonna make it work. You're talking school buses, and you're talking, like they say, forty percent of the people driving in there? Then, for future growth, I've got all the aerial maps from seventy-eight. The property to the, to the north and east, that was a boreal pit for the freeway. That was, the dirt was taken down, there was, it was almost right to the water, but they did get some trees to grow there. Then, half of that was sold to the cemetery. So, there's no future growth for the, to the cemetery. There's no future growth to the west, 'cause the Buddhists are proposing a temple there. You've got one house there, but beyond that one house, there's nothing to the west. I can't believe they don't want to have future growth. I don't know where it would go. I just took a couple notes here. I don't know what they're planning for, water from the snow, if they take it off of the, if they take it off of the parking lot. The men from the city here told me they're gonna have...
Ponds, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. And he said, "Well, the ponds, they will, they will go down." Well, I've got a pond in that area. The water doesn't go down, because the water table's that high. I'd like to know where they're gonna put ponds. He said it'll just dissipate. It'll, well, it's not gonna. You can go out to my, I'm just right next to him. That pond doesn't go down. Even that real super-dry year in eighty-eight, I still have water in my pond, because the water table's that high. Did they do borings?
Um, I...
One thing, I would love to be, have, I could walk out and watch a basketball game, softball game, volleyball, I'd love to go see your kids play. I would love to have that, but I can't believe that there isn't a better location. I'm not kidding you. Go out and check it out. You're stuck in, you've got the cemetery on one side, Buddhists on the other, and I'm behind, that's wetland back there. And I wish them nothing but luck. There's, I hope they can, if they go, if they do build there, I can foresee no end to problems. The infrastructure's not there.
Thank you.
Joyce Skechel, Ten Forty-Three North Shore Drive, Forest Lake. I have three children who attend North Lakes Academy. I have a senior, a sophomore, and a sixth grader. Been involved in the community for seven years. It's really been a wonderful fit for our family and for our children. A few things that I would like to comment on is the tremendous sense of community that North Lakes has, the individual attention that is given to the students. It's small enough that everyone knows everyone, and it just builds such a nice, safe, supportive environment. That's just been a very nurturing fit for my children, and because of the smaller size, they are given multiple, been given so many opportunities to lead and to grow as leaders in the school and in the community, and I just really appreciate this community. And although the new location is farther from my house, and my middle-schooler will no longer be able to walk to school, I'll take the punch for the bigger building and the nicer facility. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address this application?
Brad Aspman, I live at Two Zero Eight Nine Five Georgia Avenue North, about two blocks from Forest Lake High School. So, I know a lot about bus congestion during and before and after schools. But I have a junior at North Lakes Academy. We moved her over there in ninth grade, and we moved her because, you know, you go to your conferences every year for school, right? And you, we felt like our daughter was kind of just getting lost in the, in the big schools. I mean, we'd go to conferences, teachers didn't really know her name. You'd go, they'd ask who your daughter was. We'd say, "Her name's Jaden." And they'd be like, "Uh, who's that?" And we'd have to say, you know, go in-depth a little bit more. We don't have that issue at North Lakes Academy. I would say that probably most of the teachers in the high school know me by first name, and they know Jaden by first name and nickname. We are hoping to have a future fourth grader at North Lakes Academy, too. And that's not saying anything bad about Forest Lake, 'cause we actually do have a son that still attends Forest Lake, and the plan is to keep him in Forest Lake. And that's because every school environment, it changes from child to child, right? Not every school is gonna be the same and get the same avenue. Jaden has had an opportunity to become a leader. She's a captain this year. She's on the leadership committee for sports. She's involved in the school, not just in the day-to-day, but doing things outside of school as well with her classmates. And that's an environment that has really helped her grow, and that's one of the reasons we enjoy North Lakes Academy so much. And that's just kind of the personal story that we have with it. And just keep in mind that every school is different for every kid. Like I said, we hope to have a fourth grader next year. We do have a fifth grader that will stay in the Forest Lake school districts, 'cause that fits him and fits his personality and stuff like that. And we have been residents of the community for about ten years now. I work in the community for a small business that we have, and I just think it's great for us to have options for our students, so they're not just stuck in one location, 'cause every different learning environment changes for each of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the issue?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, again, Kuweng One Three Three Five Pierce Butler Routh, St. Paul, Minnesota. I just want to address a couple of the questions in which the other gentleman had. We did eighteen borings on-site. We understand where the water table is. The highest water table is around eight feet, which is in the northeast quadrant, and from there going south and southwest, we're down to about sixteen to eighteen before we hit water. And so, we are aware of that. All of the stormwater management will be contained on-site. We have multiple stormwater support drains on-site, stormwater ponds on-site. All of this plan has been submitted to the watershed district. I think they're going in front of the watershed board on the twenty-fourth or the twenty-seventh for approval, and I think City Engineer has reviewed our stormwater management plan. So, I just want to kind of clear that up a little bit and address that specifically. Thank you.
Would you mind addressing the requirement that you need to keep your water on the site?
In terms of...
And you can't increase your runoff from the site as part of our code?
Correct. Correct. We have to maintain all of the runoffs on-site. So, from the south edge of the drive lane, which connects up to Two Thirty-Second, you'll see an elevation of about two, I want to say that the elevation there is at about nine-hundred-and-twenty-one feet above sea level. That drains to the north, all the way to where the building is at about nine-ten. So, we're talking about a ten-foot drop from that area running north to where the building site is. So, going back to the visual, which you guys were talking about, from the street, if you're looking north towards the building, you'll probably see the second floor of the building. You probably won't see the first floor of the building, just because of that elevation drop. And that's the desire to mainly make sure that all that water flows to the north and into the storm ponds in which we will be building.
Thank you.
Can I ask him a question?
Quick.
Reusing the water, as long as you're addressing the stormwater, you have irrigation system? Are you using well water for that, or are you using the pond water for that, or?
At this point, we have not entertained any reuse of the stormwater portions of it. Our experience has been that reusing stormwater as part of stormwater management is cost-prohibitive at this point. We are not planning on drilling another well on-site for site watering. There will be some minimal irrigations, which is necessary for the planning and stuff of that nature, which we will be tapping into the city source, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the issue?
Hi, my name is Madeline Shaneberger. I live at, I guess I need to say my address, One Three Two Nine Sixteenth Avenue Southeast in Forest Lake. I am a junior at North Lakes Academy. I switched to this school in the middle of seventh grade. I used to go to the Forest Lake Century Junior High, and it was horrible when I went there. And just what Brad was saying about Jaden's experience, I went to school with Jaden, and we, I agree that it was a big change from, you know, there's, at the Forest Lake High School, it's more, you get kind of lost in the crowd. But at NLA, there was a big change. You know, there are sixty-six kids in a grade, and it is really amazing to be able to know everybody by their name and know your teachers, and your teachers really care about you. Every teacher that I've had, I don't think I've ever disliked a teacher at NLA, and that's not like kissing up to you guys, but just... But just the, I mean, I'm personally, I would never be speaking like this in front of you guys if I was still at Century or the Forest Lake High School. I think all of my middle-school teachers can vouch for that. When I first came to NLA, there... When I first came to N L A, there, you know, people were like, you know, when they heard my voice in class, they were like, you know, oh, you can speak. And now I'm on the student council, I'm talking in front of you guys. And I just, yeah, I just really think that N L A is a very unique and, a unique school. And it's, I'm really excited at the opportunity to be able to serve more students.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Mari Hamas. I just graduated from North Lakes Academy last year. I live at two five eight nine zero Finch Court, Wyoming, Minnesota. I actually was in, in North Lakes Academy since the beginning of seventh grades through middle school and through high school. I just gotta say, N L A is such a great community. I switched through many schools throughout my elementary to middle school and high school. And N L A was something that worked really good for me, the small class sizes and the curriculum and everything of getting that one-on-one time with teachers is something that really works for students and of how big the culture is and of how strong together N L A is. And I think it is a very great opportunity that N L A is getting this chance to expand their middle school. And I think it is something that everyone will greatly appreciate and everybody will be very excited about. So I just wanted to add a few of those words.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this application?
I don't know if I'll get another chance.
You never know with us.
Right, that's fair. Cam Stoller, one two three four hundred and twenty-third Avenue, Northeast in Blaine. I just wanted to reinforce a couple of points I made earlier. I know a couple of questions came up about future expansion on that property. And I want to address that by saying, we have a really good identity of who we are. And we know that getting bigger does not serve us well. We want to expand down to kindergarten and get bigger in that sense of being able to offer grades down through kindergarten. We do not want to grow to be a twelve-hundred, fifteen-hundred, two-thousand student school. That's not who we are. So I can say with confidence in my position, we're not looking to grow beyond what our ask is right now. In fact, we feel kind of comforted by the fact that what this land offers us in its current form doesn't allow us to do that. It helps us maintain our identity and who we are and kind of takes that off the table for us. So I just wanted to give you that reassurance or feedback on that portion of it. We, we know who we are and we just want to continue that to a younger grade. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to the application?
My name is Deanna Dale. I graduated from North Lakes Academy. Currently, I live at one zero eight four five Matthew Drive, Shisago City, but we are moving to Forest Lake, hopefully. Let's hope it works out. We've been trying to move for a while, so. But I just wanted to say, I've been here, I've been at North Lakes since fifth grade, all the way to twelfth grade. And, well, I love the school to start off. It was great. The one-on-one help with teachers was amazing. The five oh four plans and the special education help was also really amazing. I felt that, well, so I went to Lila previously, and there wasn't really any much of the special ed help there. So I suffer from depression and anxiety disorders. And so that made school kind of hard with all the social interaction. And at Lila, it was difficult because of how big it was and I didn't get as much help. But when I moved to N L A, I found that every teacher there was willing to be accommodating everybody. All the staff, all the administration was really willing to work with me and make it personalized so I could be successful. In regards to the building we're currently at for the middle school, it's tiny. So when I was in fifth grade, and that was, like, like I said, I graduated, so that was quite a few years ago. But even then, it was pretty congested in the hallways during passing time. You couldn't really pass anyone without bumping shoulders and, and, oh, there's lockers everywhere because there just really isn't room to walk. And so I really support this building because we need an upgrade. We need more space because it's just really congested right now. And to maintain the atmosphere of N L A, we just need more of room to grow. And, and it grow as in like the K through eight and then just accommodate the fifth grade we have right now, not as in grow as in like more students in per grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
They don't give credit for this.
Pointed that out.
Good evening, my name is Joshua Cameron. I live on six two two five two hundred and sixty-six Court, Wyoming, Minnesota. I am currently a senior at North Lakes Academy. I entered in sixth grade. Prior to joining North Lakes, I was homeschooled for a while. I went to Wyoming Elementary for a while. I did co-op with Hero for a while too, just trying to find something that worked. Because, high school teachers don't know this, I wasn't the best student as an elementary school kid. It was a lot, it took a lot for me to get motivated. It was always a fight to get me to like be interested in stuff. But then in sixth grade, I came to North Lakes and it was just like an instant flip. The atmosphere that was at the school was just completely different. It encouraged learning a lot. Starting in sixth grade, I ended up getting on the math league team, chess club. I ended up teaching sometimes in science class, which was a complete, complete turnaround in how I was viewing school. Moving from there up to the upper school, I've been afforded the opportunity to take on a lot of leadership positions. I've been co-captain in debate and robotics. I've been able to lead section leaders. Last year, our French teacher actually entertained our idea to take a trip to Montreal. So we did a student-led excursion there to learn and abroad experience, which is completely unheard of. For a teacher to take her own time to be able to go on this trip, entertaining the students' ideas to make sure that their opportunities were the best that they could get. What else? Yeah, I, I cannot tell you how much, right now, from that elementary school kid that did not really like school and was always never doing anything, I'm now taking, half of my classes are college level, and they're all taught by the teachers that I've had for several years. We have a relationship already, so that's really conducive to learning. Having a one-on-one and small group with, with the teacher that I'm really familiar with is really, really helpful for my learning. I wish that I could have had the opportunity to join North Lakes sooner, which is why I'm supporting this, this expansion.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the public hearing. What'll happen now is that the commission will make a decision on how we want to move forward. And you'll be right here to hear it all, so. Commissioners, what's your desire?
Can I ask the first question?
Sure.
In regard to the cemetery area, maybe this is of Donovan. Now, they're, they're right now excavating some, expanding the cemetery. There was some discussion about the cemetery was landlocked or wetland next to it or whatever. How does the cemetery and this expansion and the dirt work that's going on right there now affect what's proposed here?
There is some sort of, I believe it's, you know, roughly, you know, there's dirt work that goes on there. I believe the, the former Public Works Director issued something that would, something similar to a C U P to allow that to happen. Dirt comes in, dirt comes out. You know, every now and then we receive complaints about some sediment in the road. Generally, that's very quiet. We're not seeing any development plans come from there. It's true that, and I, you know, I haven't had any conversations with the church on, you know, any sort of expansion plans. But I just, I assume that we won't get any noise complaints from that, that side of the property.
I had to go there, Donovan.
You had to do that. Quiet area. Yeah, I guess my, my concern, my concern was, we're, we're talking about changing the, the topography of the land adjacent to it and the water runoff and all of that as far as how that might be changed. I guess that was my concern.
Sure. Looking at the, the grading plan, you can see a series of arrows that show, you know, different infiltration areas and how the, how the stormwater is directed, you know, as Kuw mentioned, you know, toward the rear of the site. Along here, that's what these black arrows represent, water flow. And then going to infiltration areas that then go again to the east part of the, the site, here to the west, to, you know, a basin here, and then it continues also infiltration basin, you know, that then leads into here. So you can see it's something curtois. And I do, I don't see, there is overflow to here through the wetlands and then, but, you know, they, you know, the site will comply with, with any of the sites that, you know, in development in Forest Lake with the stormwater requirements of the watershed district.
And then so another question I have is, is probably directed to whoever. How is this particular site chosen?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, when we do site evaluation, we looked at a number of factors. From a charter school perspective, we don't like to move school more than two miles from where the existing location. Now, statistics shows that we lose quite a bit of students if we move a school more than two miles. Once we move a school more than four miles from the existing location, we lose over eighty percent of the kids at that location. So that was a big part of it, was trying to keep the, the school within a radius in which made sense. And this is one of those sites in which made sense. Another big factor is just the cost of, of land in this area. This is a site that we're able to acquire for tab it over three hundred thousand, which allows us to then put more money towards the building and put less burden onto the school from a debt service and a rent perspective. Those were the non-constructibility piece in which we, we looked at. From a constructibility perspective, then that's when we started doing our borings and our geotech and stuff of that nature to determine if the site is a buildable site, which, as I've addressed earlier, it is. So the school may have a different viewpoint in terms of, from an educational, you know, perspective, but from a constructibility, that that's how we build it, so.
Yeah, you know, I've, I've already included this, but part of our educational contract with our authorizer is that environmental education piece that is important to us to expand on and fulfill so the site was attractive in terms of that. But also, it really is the proximity to the other campus and the ability for families to get to both places quickly and efficiently.
Eric?
Donovan, I know location did come up in the public hearing, as well as at the city council meeting on Monday. I think during the, I'm gonna draw a blank on the.
Conduit financing.
Conduit financing, thank you, for the, for the bonds for the school. The mayor had noted that this was an inappropriate location or something to that effect. Can you define to me that, that is not a basis for denial on this type of application? Is that correct?
Correct, there's, there's, I'm two-piece, there's, there's general standards of use for schools. And there's really two, two requirements, that there'd be landscaping to buffer for, you know, from adjoining, you know, land uses. Actually, landscaping may be required. In this case, it's, it's either existing or, you know, to be added. And then also the site be over one acre in size. You know, in conversations early on pre-application, you know, we noted that, you know, two, two hundred and thirty-second, you know, currently is a residential street. But, you know, we did not, the scene engineer did not require a traffic study. Also did not require a, any turning lanes or extra, you know, extra width of the road, understanding that, you know, it could accommodate this traffic. And a, the zoning district is at max R one, which schools are conditional use. And so I believe that the proper place for the application is with review with the planning commission to determine if this conditional use meets those requirements within this, on the site.
Okay, I wanted, I wanted to make, make certain that that was something that we couldn't really look at and say, is this a bright site? We're just looking at this and saying, is this building fit the other standards? The, the other note I wanted to make is, and I think you kind of touched on it there, that the road that leads into there, this came up in the neighborhood meeting. It was the, the traffic flow in and out, particularly near that Starbucks area. Starbucks backs up traffic because their driveway, quite frankly, isn't long enough. And that may cause some issues back there. But even if we required them to do a traffic study, state law prohibits us from actually forcing them to do any roads outside of immediately in front of this complex, correct?
Correct, I mean, any sort of parking entrance, you know, access, you know, can't, there can't be, you know, vehicles stacking in a, in a public road. If that's the case, you know, we need to speak to the property owner, to the business owner, to address that. And that's a compliance issue for a completely different property, completely different owner. And I, you know, if this is approved, I fully expect to talk to Inland Properties, which owns the whole Cub shopping district and Starbucks, to discuss, you know, where we can accommodate the additional traffic on this and how, well, really how they can accommodate their, you know, their drive-through traffic, which is kind of overdue to address that. But, I mean, I think this will, you know, I expect we'll have that conversation and we'll find a resolution.
Other questions, discussion?
Donovan, on your recommendations, your first recommendation was the school should have a maximum population of six hundred students. They're discussing eight hundred students.
That's the correction, that was over two campuses.
Over the two campuses?
Correct.
Okay, so this one's only gonna have the six hundred, two hundred at the, like you discussed earlier, okay. My other comment was about, or commented to you is, no, they keep discussing about holding ponds, but I don't see any holding ponds on here. I see the infiltration system on, you know, kind of along the driveway. Is that gonna be enough to hold up all the snow that's melting and the water? You know, there's no catch basins or anything, so it's all gonna drain on, on the surface and head north?
Correct, that's, that's what the grading plan shows. And, you know, they, you know, they, they have to comply with the stormwater rules. I mean, that's, you know, meeting scene engineers' concerns. When I talked to Ryan about that, he didn't have a concern. He believed that, you know, they can design it to, to make it work. You know, there is a little, you know, there's an overflow place, you know, which all the, you know, kind of stormwater ponds, you know, have that built in. And, you know, these are, you know, large, you know, this is, you know, volume, it's almost thirty thousand cubic feet of volume for that. So, I mean, they're, they're gonna be sizable, so, you know, I think they'll, they'll be adequate.
And then my last question for you is, their internal rough drains are connecting to proposed stormwater sewer? Where, where is that? The stormwater sewer? Since there's no catch basins, there's no stormwater sewer pipes, what is, what are they actually connecting to? to?
I'm not certain, you know, though we don't, we see in the front, you know, some of that drainage. But, I mean, I believe these are all, you know, site issues, and, you know, just design issues that will be taken care of during either this, you know, site engineering, or during the building permit process.
Okay.
Eric?
Two other comments. Donovan, is there enough flexibility in the staff recommendation to have them put a stripe down the middle of the driveway, so that it tells traffic that's stacking up as they're coming in in the morning, or picking up in the evening, or after, late afternoon, so that cars don't pass?
Yeah, I believe that could be added as a condition, you know, as a striping plan to, to, you know, separate traffic. Sure.
And did the city engineer look at moving the handicap parking spaces closer to the primary entrance to the building? I would presume that most handicap visitors to this facility might be grandparents, or possibly parents, that are visiting and needing to go through the main entrance. It seems awkward to have it a ways away. Has that been addressed by the city engineer, or is that included in something he'll look at later?
I believe that, you know, that was a comment that came up during the neighborhood meeting, and I-
It was me that brought it up.[697.56][697.56](Laughter)
So you're familiar with that concern? The, I believe, you know, I believe that the applicant could address that one.
I'm asking, I'm asking you, is, is it, if, if we go by the staff recommendation, will the city engineer look at that, and does he have enough flexibility to force them to move those parking spaces, as your staff recommendation is laid out?
You know, if it's considered a safety issue, I mean, generally, we look at the, you know, the, you know, is there adequate supply? You know, obviously, there's, there are ADA requirements. I'm not sure if they are, if there's any requirement to have them be closer to a front, to a front door.
You have another question?
Well, with today's security.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations, as outlined in our packet, and adding one condition, that the city engineer review handicap parking located on the site, particularly with regard to moving it closer to the primary entrance, requiring the applicant to follow that instruction.
I'll second. We got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
I don't think it's been set up here, but, you know, I absolutely commend North Lakes Academy. I think it's one of the best schools we have in the area. Even going back to when I was on our school board, almost fifteen years ago, I never heard a bad thing about North Lakes, other than those kids weren't going to the public school.[825.56][825.56](Laughter) Which I always responded, "It is a public school."[830.25][830.25](Laughter) But what, but whether it's a good school or not, I don't think is actually relevant to our decision today. So, as nice as it is to hear from, from people in the public in those things, it's, it's kind of like, you know, is, is the city streets adequate enough? We don't always have the say in that. But what is relevant, I think, and, and what, why I'm going to support this, and I encourage others in the committee to hear, is the current facility for North Lakes is insufficient, and probably, quite frankly, causes some problems for the neighborhood, and parking, and, and other things along those lines. This is an incredibly great improvement for our community. It opens up that other property to become a taxpaying business, and another asset to our community, that might not be as disruptive to that neighborhood. And quite frankly, this, this site, I will disagree with others that might say that this is not a good site. It's in a relatively quiet neighborhood location, and quite frankly, I think that's where school should go. The other piece is that it's not going into a commercial zone, or an expensive piece of property that otherwise might be a valuable development to us. So, although I understand the wetland pieces, the Watershed District has got lots more regulations than us. And I, I'm quite confident, particularly after the, the meetings that we had with the water boards yesterday, in a tour we took about how many regulations and different pieces they have. So I'm quite confident that they will address the runoff issues that the gentleman neighbor brought up to us. So, those are my comments.
Any other discussion?
I'd just like to say ditto to what he said. And I commend the group here, in terms of, we don't see that kind of support for anything in Forest Lake, it seems like. But, but the charter schools are a unique property to Forest Lake, and a very positive thing. And we, I commend you for, for your support and your enthusiasm, and, and I would certainly support this. And, and even though the comments that were made is not what we're evaluating, we're evaluating the site, as opposed to the quality of the school, but, but the support for the school, and the student involvement, and the positive attributes that you bring to the community is commendable. And, and thank you very much.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. Now, before you all leave,[1019.22][1019.22](Laughter) for the executive director, for all the students who want to continue the civics lesson, feel free to stay for the next hour and a half to two hours for our other application.[1031.13][1031.13](Laughter) Well, let me explain how this works now. The planning commission is the final decision on this. So the CUP is granted. However, if someone is opposed to our decision, they have one week.
Ten days.
One week.
Ten days, isn't it?
One week.
Seven days.
Seven calendar days.
Seven days or one week, either one.
Seven calendar days, to submit a letter to the city staff, and then, based on that, they evaluate it, and see if it's going to go before the city council, then, for them to get the final say. So typically, we are the final, but sometimes, when people have issues with it, they're welcome to appeal the decision. So if, if that does, that will happen in, at the next council meeting, so stay tuned. Other than that, I suppose for the students, class dismissed. And we'll take-[1089.48][1089.48](Applause)
To the recess, to the call of the chair.
For, uh-
We're going to be checked over as the party is ready.
Thank you. We'll resume the meeting. With that, the next order of business is the variance in conditional use permit application for Curtis Keer, 7739 North Shore Circle. This is a public hearing, and we'll consider a variance application. Before we start, I'd like to extend our thanks for allowing the school to go first. We appreciate it. But we'll get right to you now. Donovan, you're presenting?
Yes, sir. Anyways, my, my staff reports get submerged. We'll go forward. Chair, members of the planning commission, I'd like to present the, the variance and CUP request for Mr. Curtis Keer, who lives at, and resides, owns and resides the property at 7339 North Shore Circle. It's located here, almost at the base of the, of the large peninsula. Mr. Keer was one of the individuals who, back, must have been almost a year and a half ago, asked about the ability to build, you know, accessory structure on a lot, without a principal structure. If you recall, last summer and to fall, the, the planning commission, then city reviewed and recommended approval of a zoning text amendment to allow this, for properties that, their lakeshore property, within a hundred feet, a non-ruperian lot, in common ownership, could have a accessory structure, you know, with, with conditions. And so, Mr. Keer's come forth with the CUP application, as well as the request to encroach upon the wetland setback, you know, one point eight four feet, as well as the, the front yard setback, twenty-three point four six feet. The, the grass size is just twenty by twenty-six. No driveway is proposed, which gives the property about, about a five percent, proposed five percent impervious surface. There's quite a bit of area between the, of grass, between the actual pavement, and, and the lot line. And, in this case also, that, as part of this Kings Forest Hills plat from nineteen twenty-seven, which is shown on the, on the aerial with the property lines, you know, with this, this property being the subject property, it's staff expectation that these roads will most likely be never built. There are a series of, it's a mixture of tax forfeiture properties, some are privately owned, and, you know, if the city were to vacate this, in which, you know, half the property would go to adjoining property owners, the city would also likely, the city would landlock these other parcels, that, you know, some of them, you know, as you can see in your screen, are in, in private ownership. Current rules would not allow them, not allow much to be built there. Yeah, probably, and some of them, unless they're consolidated, you probably couldn't even get a dwelling unit of, you know, minimal size, according to current rules. But it's really unlikely that, through, through all these wetlands, that any roads would be built, just due to the cost, and, and simply the return. It's something of a biannual process, where these tax forfeiture lots go up on the county list, and, and the city receives calls on, you know, on the, you know, here, for instance, here's one. You want the great development opportunities, you know, in the swamp. And so we have to discourage, well, just tell them the truth, that they'd likely never be developed. And so, that's why, in this case, you know, we interpreted this as a, as a side lot, to allow a ten-foot, you know, setback. And that was a conversation I had with the city attorney, whether that was appropriate, even called that aside. But given the fact that this really does function as a side, and also, the way the front setbacks are, are designed to strictest, you know, strictest interpretation, the smallest dimension is the setback, where you do have a thirty-foot required setback over here, but because the way the lot line turns, it's, a variance request is required for this location. You know, drainage showing is just, largely a flat lot, but drainage showing, you know, emanating from, from the proposed structure. There is, it's pretty much all grass and wetland behind here. There's a small shed on, on this property. The, in your staff report, I do, you know, recommend approval with conditions related to, you know, ensuring no drainage issues result, that all, a building permit is issued prior to construction activities. And also, that a variance from the wetland, Comfort Lake, Forest Lake wetland, I'm sorry, Watershed District is obtained. And that was something I learned later on in the application process, when I sent over there for their review, that that, a separate variance is required, because of their, through their rule interpretation, is a new use being established. So that was the recommendation that I, that I put in the staff report. However, today, when I visited the site, I did find that what, what appears to be wetland fill are definitely some, you know, some encroachment upon what's called wetland here, is now, is now shown as, you know, you can tell in this photo, new grass, that it expands beyond, and in the rear, there's lake algae, lake, lake grasses that are mounded, and also, you know, filling in the wetland, or the area that's identified as a wetland on, on the survey. So, at this point, and it's part of our, my review, is that I did not require a formal wetland delineation through the process, where there's a technical evaluation panel that visits the site, and actually takes this line, and, you know, in that group process, defines it, and there's a, you know, there's a formal, formal application for that. That work was not done, considering the scale of the project. And, but at this point, the staff recommendation is to table application, until a formal wetland delineation is, is completed, to determine if that is wetland fill, and, and that, and that issue is, is taken care of, and then proceed with the application.
So, no public hearing, just?
That would, that would be to the, you know, the planning commission discretion. We did publicly notice for one.
Okay.
In that case, you know, I, I would recommend, you know, holding that, to, just to fulfill that obligation.
Yep. Okay.
So what you're saying is that the part of the lot has been expanded, filling in some wetlands? Is that what it appears?
It appears. I did have a conversation with, with the applicant, Mr. Keer, who's here. And he, and he says that no fill was brought in, and that there was actually a kind of a clover, you know, mix of grasses that were, you know, that were there. But I don't see any remaining, you know, wetland-type grasses, or, you know, obviously, you know, I don't recall from my, the site visit that I made about a month and a half ago, you know, as a, as a pre-application, you know, just conversation with the, with the surveyor and the builder. I don't recall, you know, really what was over here. But, so, we don't see the cattails. And that's why, in, in some cases, it may not, it may not be a wet, it may not be a wetland fill situation. But we wouldn't know that until there is, you know, experienced eyes who could determine that. Because they could also determine, you know, going through the, the top, topsoil, they could go to, below that, to hydro soils with an auger, which is, you know, a kind of common practice to determine, you know, if there is wetland below that. And perhaps, you know, you know, the application could come back with lessened encroachment in the wetland buffer, you know, the twenty, twenty-foot required buffer between the wetland line and the structure. But at this point, I'm saying we, we don't know much about the site, and I'm concerned that there is wetland fill.
Thank you. Any other questions for Donovan? Would the applicant like to speak?
I'm Kurt Keer. I reside at 7739 North Shore Circle, North in Forest Lake. Thanks for hearing this. Again, part of this is, is new to me today, so I'll outline a couple of pieces. First, on the variance in the CUP, CUP piece, and how we got to this point. We, you know, I've been working with Donovan for about a year and a half, first, to get it approved, that we could actually do this, and then to get to this point. My whole contention from the beginning was, if you look at this picture, it shows pretty well, but the, if that front little square piece of, of where the garage is supposed to go, that's actually, I, I call it high ground, but it's, it's probably a good foot, foot and a half higher than everything else around it, so it's- a half higher than everything else around it, so it's, it shows is a little bit higher if you want to look at it, and that's why they had their meeting out there. But if you look at that, that ground is higher. So if if we're allowed to put the garage in there, the whole contention from the beginning is that we wouldn't be disrupting everything else, because, excuse me, we're already kind of on high ground already, so, you know, they would have to, whatever the permits allow, they'd have to dig down a little to put classified gravel and then just a slab-on-grade. So we would not disrupt any of the wetland around there. So that was kind of the intent and purpose for that. So I guess that was my contention from the beginning, is that we wouldn't be disrupting any of the wetland. Now, that second piece was just added in today. I did see grass, but I did not fill anything in. All I did is I essentially weed whipped out, and Donovan was showing the pictures on there. That is new seed. The back of it was already open, the back, there is a trail for deer back there, that was already open, so it's probably about a 10, 15 by 20-foot section that was kind of leveled off, and that overgrown with a bunch of thistles on there. And then the piece in front that Donovan was referencing, it's set off of my, I seeded over into the piece that I was already mowing. So I did weed whip that down and clear it off, and just reseeded it with, it's a deer food plot, so I did clover and turnips and and a sugar beet. So now, I guess I didn't realize that maybe I pushed a little bit into the wetland, so that piece certainly will have to address. But I did not bring any fill in. I didn't do anything else, other than I went out and worked it and just add a new, new seed in. So it's, and before, though, it was, it was so overgrown in burning nettles, that's the term I have, from burning nettles that are hanging over in the edge, I couldn't even mow the lawn. The deer that used to travel through there, they come into our yard now, and they've eaten hostas all around the house. They don't even go into that property more, because the burning nettles, I, they probably don't bug them, but they just don't want to go in there. I've seen them circle out into the road to go around that. So all I wanted to do is just replace the burning nettles and the thistles with something for the deer, but obviously, that's a separate issue now, too. But the the main permit and variance for the garage, the contention, is that piece alone is still in high ground.
Let me ask you, Donovan has asked us to table this until we get a little more information. I don't know how much your discussion had with what the table does, but basically, it just puts this on hold till we get some information. What it allows is that your variance, for your application, just to stay as is, so we're not forced to make a decision, and we find out other information later, and you got to reapply. So that's why we're looking for, he's looking for a table tonight, get the rest of the data, we resume up, and then we would make a final decision. Does that, does that make sense to you?
Sure.
Any questions we can answer on that?
I guess my first question would be, assuming that we addressed the the piece that came up today on the seeding piece that that I obviously didn't, and shunked up to some degree anyway, does does the main premise for this and the variance, does that seem like it would move forward? I mean, it would give me a better idea of what I need to do to still address this going forward, and whether or not that wetland variance piece would still be coming into effect. Can you guys even comment on that, or not really?
Sure, we can tell. We can always comment.
Always comment, yeah.
But we won't know until those answers come back to us.
The delineation of the wetland is going to be the key thing.
Yeah, so assuming that we can resolve that piece, so does the the format and the use of the garage or the building of the garage, does that seem to make sense? Because I have to go to the the variance for the wetland, too, then, and ask them to go through that process, so I don't want to, you know, there's another fee for that, too, and get it on their agenda, if you guys think there's other reservations with this.
I, for for me, the, there's a few things. The the road distance variance portion, I I'm not concerned about that.
Yeah, the road that's not there?
Correct. So that's a non-issue to me. The the wetland piece and the proximity to it, I think you're going to have a much harder time with the watershed boards than you will us. But it's hard for me to say specifically, without that wetland delineation. You know, my biggest question of whether I'm going to support a table or not, is more to staff of, how long does a wetland delineation take? Are we going to butt up against the 90 or 180 rule?
The the application can stay, can stay active live with the permission of the applicant beyond 120 days.
So I'm assuming you're not familiar with the 91?
60-day rule.
60, 120-day rule. It's been a long day. So there's, there's a, it's called a 60-day rule. State law says we have to make a decision within 60 days, or you get your application as applied.
But the, but the city can arbitrarily, you can elaborate, extend it to 120 days.
It's an effective 120-day, because he just sends you a letter and it's done. It goes to 120. If that 120 days hits, you have to agree with the city to basically say it can extend beyond that. Otherwise, it only makes sense for us to just vote it down if we don't have enough information.
Sure.
So that's kind of the the question I'm asking him. So, in part, if we know that that wetland delineation is going to take a long time, it would be advantageous for us to know if you would support that being extended to whatever amount of time that it takes to do wetland delineation, and whatever else the water board and such needs to present us with enough information to make our decision.
Yeah, it makes sense for both sides. I agree.
Well, the other question I have is, now, you have no intention of a driveway?
Nope.
Okay, so there's no change in the previous structure?
No, it's the garage, and I think you mentioned, there's just a cement apron on the front of it, but no, no driveway.
Okay. And there's a couple of trees there, they stay on the right hand side?
There's one that's basically right where the garage is at. That's, it's, it's a tree, but it's not very attractive, but there is a birch in front of it that we may or may not keep, depends on, I mean, it's not very big either, but that one, it depends on what we have to do to get behind it, it might be in the way to get to it. But there's not much for trees on that property, too.
Right, just the two, yeah. Okay.
Any other discussion?
I make a motion, we table it per?
No, please don't.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Oh, it's public hearing, all right. I thought we didn't have that one.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public hearing. If we ask, if you wish to speak to this application, please come up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. We will hear everyone who wishes to speak to this issue. Upon everyone being heard, we will close the public hearing and bring it back for a motion. So that will officially open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to this issue? I'll ask one more time, does anyone wish to speak to this issue? See, no one come forward, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
I make a motion, we table it until we get the rest of the information about the delineation of the wetlands.
I'll second that. All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Chair?
Aye.
May I ask a point of clarification first?
Sure.
Because we can't discuss a table motion, so I'm asking for a point of clarification. Is, your, your motion is, can you restate your motion, please?
I move to table it until we have the required delineation information about the wetlands.
So it does not include a clause that addresses if that is not attained in 60 or 120 days? Is that correct or not?
Correct.
Okay.
Does it need to?
We can't discuss that. It's a table.
All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions, motion carries. Eric, would you like to explain that, then? If we, why we should include that?
We should include something that says that that table returns to us in 60 days or 120 days, or prior to that point in time, so that we can vote this down. Otherwise, it is approved as presented if they don't bring that information forward, as you stated your motion.
Donovan has.
Yeah, it's, it's my responsibility to make sure that gets an agenda to comply with 120-day rule, one way or the other.
City should be able to manage that, yeah. Okay.
All right, so that's where we sit today, so you got some direction from Donovan, feel free to contact him. Since we held a public hearing, there won't be another public hearing notice, so we can get it on the agenda pretty quick that way. So once it's all established, we expect to see you right back here after that. So good luck in your information gathering. And again, thank you for letting the school go first. Next item on the agenda is 399th Avenue Southwest, a planned unit development amendment, which will hold a public hearing and consider a PUD application. Are we going to take these separate, Donovan?
Yes, as motions, yes, we will, because there's two public hearings, yes.
So go ahead.
All right. I'd like to present the PUD application, I'm sorry, amendment for the legacy apartments. The location is basically just, you know, a quick northwest travel from the city center. Currently on the site is a, is 42 apartment units in two buildings, Milpon Forest and Maple Point.
Court.
Huh?
Maple Court.
Maple Court, thank you. And also, the single-family home on the south here, which is primarily the location of the proposed apartment building. The, the access is proposed from Forest Street and also through a common driveway through 9th Avenue Southwest on the north side of the site. So this shows, you know, current conditions with the two apartment, apartment buildings, the single-family home. One unique piece about this property is looking closer, I think, existing conditions, is there's a series of wetlands, as well as there is an official part, official designation of floodplain on the property. Sorry there. And the, it's roughly shown here in the staff report, just to give you an idea. And in 2011, there actually was a, an amendment to the floodplain to to pull these, you know, this house out of the, house, you know, and structure in, I believe, you know, an outbuilding out of the floodplain, but the more extensive letter of map revision was not done. And currently, the applicant is, has submitted that, and that that process is is ongoing. And this whole, any sort of city approval is contingent upon a successful letter of map revision, since residential uses are strictly restrict, you know, is really limited within the floodplain areas, according to local zoning code. My conversations with the watershed district is, they don't believe it's going, you know, as far as the technical side of it, it's not, it's not an issue, like, it has proper elevation, and I almost interpret that as something of an error in the map. However, it's, it's a very important thing to address. So you see here on the, let me get a little better site plan, it shows the 91-unit building, four-story, with a proposed stormwater treatment area. There currently is a wetland delineation process going through there, the formal process. Let me get a little better. And the, here's, here's the access from Forest Street. There are, this will be a joint parking facility between the three buildings, and the city is requiring easement and a joint parking agreement as part of that, and that's something that the, you know, is part of the application. The, the parking is proposed for 120 new surface parking areas and 66 enclosed parking areas on the lowest level of the building. That effectively is about a total of little over two spaces per unit. The requirement is 2.1 spaces per unit, and that's one of the PUD flexibilities is, is a reduced parking, both enclosed and the total number. The PUD flexibilities include, sought, include greater residential density, decreased minimum unit square footage, increased number of one-bedroom units, decreased rear yard setback, increased height, decreased rear setback as a result of the lot line change, which is part of the minor subdivision, you know, the next on the agenda, and request that the trash enclosure on the, on the north side of the site be within the 10-foot setback from the right away. You know, getting to the actual one-bedroom unit mix, they're proposing 61% of the total units to be one-bedroom, and this does match with many of the apartment units we've seen, and it appears to be also consistent with, you know, with trends towards smaller household sizes. And staff supports granting this flexibility. The applicant has 12 studio units, which are smaller than the minimum 600-square-foot size, and they're asking for flexibility with that, which the Plan Commission has granted in two other apartment projects. Also, that the, this property is within a multiple-family zoning district, where it's stated there's a maximum of 15 dwelling units per acre. The residential density proposed is 25, 25.9 dwelling units per acre. The, the setbacks come about, it's a, the setbacks for the building are seen in, well, here's the, just some photo, elevation drawings, color photos of the building. This would be from, I believe, from 11th Avenue. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Let's go a little bit deeper into the site here. So the, the multiple-family district has a 30-foot setback for the side, and this is interpreted as the front being this, the more, the narrower dimension on this corner lot. So this is the side, and they're requesting 22 feet off this. This is adjacent to the Harbor Creek Trail here. And then, the, the, in this case, it would be the, the, the proposed lot line would be approximately six, six, um, six feet from the, the building's proposed to be, six feet from the proposed property line running along here, this would be the rear property line, as defined by zoning district, zoning code standards. The, the building's proposed to be about 49, four stories, about 49 feet, and it's also requested PUD flexibility for that increased building height above the, the four-story or 45-foot zoning district maximum. The, the exterior structure meets the minimum design standards. Also, the, the, the property meets the design standards for landscaping with adequate foundation plantings and a number of trees on this perimeter of both the building and the parking area and the stormwater facility. The, there's some light poles located within the parking lot that do exceed the, the maximum of 25 feet, so staff requirement is that there be reduced to 25 to comply with, with that standard. The proposed trash enclosure The proposed trash enclosure is located just off this Ninth Avenue cul-de-sac, which essentially functions as the, you know, being that there's no other direct access to Ninth, correct?
That was our thought, yes.
Well, I mean, as, on the north side, private, other private access?
No, there's nothing to access there.
You know, that, you know, but it's within ten feet of the right-of-way, and so that's, they're requesting the PUD flexibility for that one. And also, staff recommends that as an improvement to the, to the function of it. And for the actual building, the trash enclosure is proposed to be in the lower, lower level. And no monument sign is proposed at this time, any future signage would be required to get a sign permit. The fire chief has reviewed the, the building and site plan, and has proposed a location of two hydrants. One is located in this area southwest of the Milpon Forest building, and also a proposed location along Eleventh, which I believe the project team is locating somewhere in this area here. The parkland dedication fee, staff will make a request to the Parks, Lakes and Trails Commission to do a fee in lieu of, according to the current fee schedule. And a neighborhood meeting was held. There were a series of questions, concerns related to, to the site that were part of that meeting. And then the, at this point, staff recommendation is, is approval to grant those PUD flexibilities listed with eleven conditions that relate to the, you know, the FEMA approval, the fire hydrant locations, you know, vacation of any drainage easements that are, that no longer have a public use, and establishment of new easements if, you know, if needed. And that is outlined in the staff, engineer staff report, where Ryan also talks about, you know, some changes to the park. Also, that, you know, urging the, urging the project to incorporate sidewalks, you know, on this west side of the site to accommodate future, future trail expected on the north side of Eleventh when the road's reconstructed. And an additional, you know, staff recommendation is that, you know, all the site improvements be located at least thirty feet from this right-of-way, since the county does, does plan to expand that by twenty-seven feet on this side of the property, you know, as they, you know, as part of that reconstruction effort, to a total of one hundred and twenty foot right-of-way. And at this point, I'm happy to take any questions from the planning commission.
Eric?
Hey Donovan, on your recommendation number nine said the applicant shall obtain the required county permits to connect a sidewalk to the Hardwood Creek Trail. I believe the property is actually owned by the Washington County Regional Rail Authority.
Correct.
Need to issue a permit as well, or have they already?
I've facilitated communication between the project team and, and the county. This is something similar, you know, similar to what happened with the House Lofts, they also had a similar feature. And, you know, and they did, they did approve that.
Is it the county?
I don't know the status of that, but...
Is it the county, or is it the?
Well, it's, it's, County Public Works is the person, the staff person we work through, that the applicant works through with that. You're correct, at the Regional Rail Authority, Washington County Regional Rail Authority actually owns the property. It's, I think it's, the parks, you know, maintains it, maybe. So, I mean, technically, I mean, I'm using shorthand that, you know, there's some county permitting body, you know, or permitting process for that.
So you, it might be better written in that recommendation, like, just to take out county and put the applicant obtained required permits to connect sidewalk to Hardwood Creek Trail, then we're not defining who it has to come from?
Sure. Is that a friendly amendment?
I'm asking if you would be supportive of that change in your recommendation.
Sure.
Supposed to.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Take the county part out.
Yes.
Other questions?
So, so the property that this is being proposed on is today heavily treed. So that it'll be completely, trees will be completely removed and start from scratch, or no?
Correct. The, you know, the heart, the woodland tree, woodland preservation regulations do allow tree removal within thirty feet of improvements and, you know, essentially utilities. That, and that essentially, you know, really covers, you know, the entire site, you know, of the new construction.
The other thing, okay, so the runoff, there's, they're utilizing the existing pond that's on the west side, is that true?
Correct.
So there's no additional holding ponds?
No additional, but I believe they have to increase the storage there. Also, I didn't mention, but as part of the application is some wetland, four-point, point-four-six acre wetland replacement. And that's an ongoing process. And, but they, you know, so that's, that's engineering that has to, you know, they have to accommodate the stormwater, same with all applicants, you know, in our city.
Because I, you know, that particular pond drains into Clear Lake.
Correct.
And I think that the runoff from that pond has been an issue of contributing to nutrients that we don't want in Clear Lake, Clear Lake. So I don't know if that's, if that's gonna add to that, if it's going to change it, it's going to do what?
Well, I mean, they have to control the, you know, the rate and volume, you know, per stormwater rules, and those are administered by the watershed district. You know, as far as, you know, any sort of pollutants, I mean, that's, you know, there are, there are, you know, there are grants, you know, there are measures they could take. Right now, I don't know if their plan includes anything to reduce the, you know, the phosphorus or, or, you know, kind of organic load of the runoff.
But again, you know, there's no plan to reuse stormwater.
I don't believe that's...
For irrigation or any other purpose, no systems or anything like that, runoff from the building?
I think that's the correct assumption.
Donovan, if, I'm a little confused, there's a single-family home on here. That was part of the original PUD?
Yes. Through Milpon Forest, passed in two thousand and two, they did a CUP for a PUD. So that, so this is a simple, a PUD amendment.
And they own that house, or some, I always get confused from, so they must have owned the property then, to include it all in there?
Correct.
Okay. Other questions? Would the applicant like to say a few words? We asked you to state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Mike Keding. My address is two-two-two-six-nine Lilac Court in Forest Lake. I've been a lifelong resident and love the city. You wanna just pull up the rendering really quick?
Which one?
Oh, some of the renderings?
Yeah, sure.
So, as a company, we're focused on creating a better way for our residents to live. And so for us, some of the most important elements are things, just like the aesthetics. If you look at Greenway in Minneapolis and Uptown, they have this beautiful bike trail with these really nice apartments along each side. And so our dream really here is, along with what Con companies has done, to add another asset to the community along that bike trail, and really build up the main corridor here. So we've developed this site plan and this building. It has quite a few different amenities in the project, there's a pool outside, outdoor amenity space. Indoors is a two-story main entryway. There is a large workout facility, there is a sky loft where we have a community center and kind of a sky loft area. There's onsite, onsite management and underground parking. We have trash chutes inside the building, we're really trying to make it a really nice, bring up, bring even better quality of properties here to the Forest Lake area. On top of that, we're really big into things like smart tech. We have an IT development team that has developed some of the first smart apartments in the entire Minnesota. And so some of our properties right now have that in place, and this will have the most advanced versions that we'll be developing. And hopefully by that point, we'll actually allow residents and potential residents to download an app onto their phone and let that open different doors to the building, so they can do self-guided apartment tours. Just some of the stuff we're working on. But you'd mentioned about the pollutants. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're actually switching our pond system over to an infiltration system. I don't think that's the current system, that was an older design back when it was originally approved. But that forces all of the water to go through, basically filtering that water before it goes in the lake. So I believe it is gonna get improved as a result of this project. And a lot of the little changes that we're doing are really, the heart behind it is to create a better site. So like the trash enclosure, right now, there isn't a trash enclosure for the Milpon Forest building. It's just a dumpster on a slab. Again, that was approved back with old standards, but we want to improve that with the Milpon Forest, that older building. And build a trash enclosure, it's trying to make everything work. So, I guess that's, any questions that you guys have?
Questions?
Mike? I only had the one, that was the trash enclosure. I was on the fire department for years, and we were in that building right next door, now it's Public Works. Yeah, you're right, the trash can, big dumpster just sat out there. But it doesn't say anywhere what you're going to use to enclose that.
Oh, it'll be a block enclosure, enclosure, so like a decorative block with the gates in front of it, kind of the standard enclosures you see.
Just, that's good, just curious what, because it wasn't in the paperwork anywhere.
Can I mention one other thing? You had asked about irrigation, and I had, we hadn't thought about that with this project, but our project that we're currently building here in Forest Lake, the Gateway Green Project, we have, all of our irrigation there is using the stormwater pond, so I am happy considering that for this project too. You have a question, Gary?
I did, it's just kind of like...
Oh, sorry.
Senior moment, yeah, yeah. I guess it had to do with the entrance to it. The Ninth, is it Ninth Avenue, yeah, it's Ninth Avenue that's on the north edge of all of these apartments, correct? Between that and the Public Works. Now, is that the main entrance that's intended? Or is it, there's an additional entrance off of Fourth that's planned, correct, in addition to that?
Yeah, it's hard to say what I would consider the main entrance, but, you know, Fourth and Ninth is the two entrances. Fourth is closer to the new building.
Right, right there, that's the entrance where you had the cursor?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So if you, if you were to use the Ninth Avenue one as your main entrance, you may want to request the Public Works to clean house a little bit, make it look a little better where the entrance is. Cut some weeds and some things like that.
Yeah, that's kind of a mess.
Other questions? Thank you, we may have more later.
Okay.
This is a public hearing to consider the PUD amendment. So if you wish to speak to this issue, we ask you to come up, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple of minutes giving your thoughts, and we'll go from there. So we'll officially open a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak to the issue?
Hello, commissioners? My name is Tyler Stadler, I live at one-seven-three-zero Larpenter Avenue West, Falcon Heights, Minnesota. I just, I just listened to what you guys were saying, I had a couple of comments on that about the connection to the Hardwood Creek Trail with the rail authority. I have actually contacted a representative with them, and she did tell me that one of the concerns was that when the new, when Eleventh comes in and gets rebuilt, you know, if there would be a concern, if we connected our, our trail up real close to where it would potentially connect up to the new road, they didn't find any issues there. We haven't submitted a permit yet, but we do plan to. The other thing was about the trees. We will be removing, pretty much, yeah, we're the new buildings that will be removing all the trees along there. We will be keeping all the heavy lot of trees to the east of Milpon Forest, right where his cursor's at right now. Those will all maintain there. So, that's really all I had to comment on.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this application? I'll ask one more time, does anyone else wish to speak to this application? Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing, bring it back for decision by the commission. Commissioners?
One question, and just to clarify, just to clarify, the tree part on Eleventh. So the building will be visible from Eleventh, there will not be trees between Eleventh and the building, existing trees. There will be new landscaping along that section. The distance between, and obviously that's been accounted for for the new right-aways and all that kind of stuff, but, but the distance between the actual end of the right-of-way and the beginning of the building is approximately what?
You mean, actually currently, or post-reconstruction?
Proposed.
For both? It's, I believe it's currently about, let me get a different image here. I don't know if these represent, you know, the latest iteration, because there was, you know, things requested by the C engineer. And part of this was, the building is somewhat, a little bit of askew. So on this western side, it is closer, and currently it's about, I guess, I have to do a measurement on the Alta, which is that, existing, is it existing conditions? Because it shows, that's the thirty-foot line that they're describing from the southern lotline, which shows up again here. So I mean, it's approximately, you know, from, from the gravel edge currently, it's approximately forty-two or so feet, you know, from the edge. But with the expanded right-of-way, the right-of-way edge line will be almost, you know, coincident, or maybe three feet from the actual building. But the, you know, where they propose, where they put any kind of trail or road would be some distance from that. So obviously, you know, they're only planning a maximum of a three-lane wide road, you know, two travel lanes and a center-turn lane. And so the actual, you know, right-of-way is much wider than that, so...
But the plan, the planned trail for this proposal is on the south side of the building along, between that and Eleventh? Between the building and Eleventh for the sidewalk, or whatever you were calling it?
Well, I mean, it's all still to be designed, but that seems to be, you know, I believe that's gonna be the case to have this, this trail on the north side, and we'll include a trail, there's really no reason to put it on the south side, where you just have a series of single-family homes and many, many driveways crossing it, but...
I'm talking about the sidewalk that is being proposed with the development, with the apartment building?
Okay, they're not proposing anything down here.
Oh, they're not, okay, I misunderstood that, all right.
Just on Fourth.
To that little trail.
The city is, we've, I'm not sure if, maybe you could, you could speak to that, Mike, as far as...
Where's the connection to the trail then?
Combinating a pedestrian, a sidewalk on Fourth?
It's on the back side of this. Can you show the connection to the trail, I think it's on, up a little...
Is that right off on Ninth then?
No, I'll move it to your right. I'll move it to your right, move it west.
What? I mean, this is the trail that Tyler mentioned, right here. This, you know, this is the Hardwood Creek Trail here.
Did I misunderstand? I thought there was some concern about that particular connection versus what they were going to do on Eleventh for the future. So, that's okay. I'm all right.
Other discussion.
I like what they did with the handicap spots there. They got rid of that center median. They put the line straight through. It's right close to the main front entrance. This was, these were small topics that were brought up at the meeting upstairs, and I see they did make the changes and minor changes, but it still looks good and it's going to
Other discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve, as recommended by staff, removing the word county on the ninth item in the recommendation.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Next, we have, for the same property, 399th Avenue Southwest, a minor subdivision. Again, we have a hold of public hearing to consider this minor subdivision application. Donovan, you are presenting.
Certainly. Chair members of the Planning Commission like to present the minor subdivision application for the Milpon Forest PUD site. The intent of this is so that each, there'd be a single parcel for each building, for the Maple Court, for the Milpon Forest, and proposed apartment building on the south side. Each parcel meets the individual one-acre minimum for the multiple-family, you know, zoning district area and also minimum width of that. And here's where the six-foot setback referred to in the first previous agenda item comes into play, where this would, you know, if this is approved, it would have that lot line run right six feet from the rear of the proposed apartment building. So, we wanted to make sure that was included in the PUD flexibility to not put that parcel, that property into a non-conforming status. Though it's mentioned in the staff memo text, but I neglected to put it in the condition of approval, but I'd like to make a recommendation of a Planning Commission recommendation for City Council approval for the minor subdivision with the conditions that the, a lot line adjustment be executed prior to the, you know, to the minor subdivision in order to create this lot line, which is moving this, the original, you know, parcel line northward, this, moving this line northward in order to accommodate this so that there's actually, you know, actually one lot, basically one lot line occurring where there's a, you know, one additional lot being created through the minor subdivision process. It's a technical piece, but it is required in order to not have, in order to make this lot line be accurate rather than, you know, down, approximately down here as it currently And also, a condition of approvals include the minor subdivision agreement prepared and approved by the city attorney, paying the applicable parkland dedication fee, and the... And then also have, you know, in the special language requiring, allowing it to be executed without having to go back and do a, another approval through City Council through the consent agenda process. So, this case, I'd like to take any questions from the Planning Commission?
Questions for Donovan? Donovan, I have one. It's fourth recommendation. Is that really for us, or is that you looking for that for when the City Council does it? I've not seen this before.
We've used it rarely because, basically, there's, I think, I want to do it more often so that we're not held up with having, putting city signatures on these items that they've already approved. The way our current city attorney interprets state statute, that any time a city official signs an agreement involving some sort of obligation to a, obligation of city resources, it needs to have expressed city approval. So, for instance, if you looked at, if you've been fans of City Council, if you looked at last consent agenda, there was an item related to a dispersment agreement with the school district, related to site improvements with Southwest Junior High. That was put in the consent agenda to actually give, to meet that state statute requirement that every agreement be approved by the council. This language, which actually also was within the Headwaters Development Agreement, Headwaters Place Final Pla, approval because of the idea that we want to make, you know, allow a steady approval of the development agreement following that approval, so we wouldn't have to wait for another two weeks, maybe, to put it on consent agenda to actually have the official approval to put it on city signatures.
Thank you for confusing me, Ma.
I know, I know.
Appreciate it.
So, by putting this in now...
This is, let's just say this is Bridget's clause, okay?
All right, works for me.
I mean, it may not be needed, but it's something that we want to put on these ones where, you know, there's very little, you know, staff can, there's, basically, staff can execute it, and, you know, any council approval has already happened, you know, in our view.
Thank you. Mike?
So, by putting this on the agenda here tonight now, is saving a step later?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other question?
Not for you, but for City Council.
No, not for us, but for the whole city, the staff, everyone. It's going to save some time down the road.
Correct.
Are we going to see this a lot more often?
Yeah, I mean, I've used it with these minor subdivisions because it, you know, they're not really complex, many of these applications.
Does the applicant wish to make any comments regarding this?
No.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We ask that you wish to address the hearing, please come up, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple of minutes giving us your thoughts on this application. Once we've heard from everyone, we will close the public hearing and have a decision for a recommendation to the City Council. So, with that, we'll open the public hearing. Does anyone wish to address this application? I'll ask a second time. Does anyone wish to address this application? Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for a decision.
I'll move that we recommend to City Council the subdivision as outlined by staff with their recommendations.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none? Call the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. We have moved to the other part of our agenda. So, before I turn it over to everybody else, I want to thank Kevin for running the meeting a few weeks back when both Eric and I were not available to attend the meeting. I understand he did a bang-up job and got, was probably a record time for the Planning Commission meeting. So, I take that as, I need to move it along, I guess. With that, other, I know we have no late August meeting?
September it is.
I'm sorry?
Late September meeting, correct.
I'm going to go back to summer.
We have two or three variants, you know, double or triple header in October, you know, which is good time for double headers and such, right? They should have more double headers, World Series.
If you say so.
You know, I don't know, it's kind of mixed. That's not a good sports metaphor. Sorry.
Anything else for the city today?
No, I'll just report that the, you know, the kind of inter-jurisdictional review of the comprehensive plan is ongoing. We've had a few, some comments. I mean, nothing earth-shattering, but just that, that's out there, and, you know, we're moving toward the adoption.
Can you provide any comment on, the one question I always get is a third, next to the new gone property apartments. It's been a mudhole for months now. I know there's been a lot of issues. The question is, when are we going to pave it?
You know, as part of the whole development approval, which, of course, went through this body, you know, they are responsible for reconstructing that road. They focused on, basically, on building the building. We had, there was a meeting last week in which, you know, they attempted to iron out some issues. There's some contaminated soils. The city has agreed to remove those, do some more testing. And also, there's, you know, there's some talk about the city going out to bid and actually doing that work, you know, with gone paying for the construction. But I don't know of any timelines, but the last I heard was that our interim city administrator believes that it can be done, you know, completely before frost.
I hope so. We need the parking down there, man, if you're going to go hang out.
You need the parking?
I see them all walking across the street to go to the restaurant from Behind Cherry's Ice Cream place there. That's all I have. Be quiet. Anybody else?
Just two other things probably, but one is our City Council, Elias and Mara, does anybody have an update on how her health situation is going?
From what she's posted online, it seems as positive as it can be for her.
The other question that I keep getting, and also I'll repeat it, is the, we had a big deal this earlier in the year in regard to trees on the Winnick property, and half of the job was done and the other half is left undone. Is there, is there something? And I also heard that there was something in the mill about different enforcement rules for conditions for permits of that nature and that there'd be some kind of a method of enforcing them better than just discussion?
Well, yeah, there's current, there's ongoing staff discussion on how to treat all conditional-use permits and what, you know, how to work for, work toward compliance when they're out of compliance. We haven't come to, you know, final decisions on that, and so, it's, I don't have any definite thing to say right now.
Anything else?
Eric? I just wanted to note that I know a number of the commissioners were at the Water Board event, or I don't know, I don't reme...
Tour.
Stormwater tour, and it involved the Planning Commission, City Council members, state rep, county board members, couple watershed district park board. It was, I think it was a really big, nice group of people, all kind of learning a lot, and whoever organized or put that together wanted to just say thanks publicly. I thought it was worthwhile, both from the educational aspect as well as the relationship building with other boards and committees and leaders in our area. So, thanks.
And dovetailing on that, and this would be in your area where somebody comes in and applies for a permit or building permit or whatever, that the reusable water theory be built into. I think that there is more and more emphasis on stop using well water for irrigation and such, and even the well water that comes through the city lines, it's still well water.
Yeah, I mean, I've heard many discussions, you know, I've heard, many times I've heard the city engineer advocating that these sort of, you know, water reuse regimes because at some future time, the city is going to apply, you know, to the DNR for water appropriations permit for a third municipal well. And, I'm sorry, a third tower, I guess, an additional well connected to that. And, you know, they're going to look at, well, how are you using, how well are you using, no pun intended, how well are you using the water now, you know? And are you reusing water? Are you minimizing, you know, the miserable drawing from the aquifer? And so, I mean, I think what you're saying is quite in line with, you know, his intent. You know, though, you know, of course, I think our city code could take extra steps to encourage that or, you know, mandate that in some cases. You know, right now, it's just been lucky that Bolden Mank, you know, has worked with applicants, you know, with the watershed district, too. I mean, they've already come forward to find the funding, you know, for the two big projects over at the school and, you know, and for instance, over, you know, Mike mentioned over Gateway Green, I mean, there's a real advantage there with, you know, they can reuse the water. You know, I think it related to being able to reuse the existing stormwater pond rather than creating more capacity. So, that was, I mean, it's like a double win there. And, you know, as our redevelopment occurs or more dense development occurs, I think we might see more of that where, you know, people look at sites and realize there's a lot more valuable use to, you know, things we can appreciate than simply just treating the stormwater, you know, in these, you know, surface ponds.
Anything else? Mike?
I know, like, Steph Sagner was, he's building that spot up here where the old licensed bear was. I've heard a couple of stories where I know he came in front of us and they're doing the stormwater recycling, but I've heard that now that fell through, he's not going to go through with that anymore. Is that, have you heard anything about that?
I don't know. I don't know. He's doing some infiltration, you know, it's Rice Creek Waters District, is the permitting entity there with the stormwater. And they went through a long period where they moved from these underground reservoir, this underground reservoir underneath the parking lot to a kind of an infiltration area, lost some parking, so that's a concern. And, you know, and we've had continued conversations around what uses couldn't fit there because of the reduced parking.
It's a small lot.
Yeah. And, but, yeah, I don't know if, you know, if water reuse was part of the conversation. I don't know. But I don't believe it's part of the site now.
All good?
We're good.
Chair is looking for a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all commissioners for your participation this evening.